I was looking at the longest speeches and saw that Pidal Castro did one lasting four hours and twenty-nine minutes of United Nations. And to his party congress, he did seven hours and ten minutes. So I thought I'd try to break that record tonight. That, of course, is a joke. So I was told by Kevin to be no more than ten minutes. So...
Good man.
Okay.
Right. Sleepford Town Council is now a very different council to six months ago. Sleepford Town Council has undergone massive change over the last six months as the council's restructured its system of governance. Sleepford Town Council has abolished its five committees and also a large number of working groups. Some of the work has been given to panels, but the great majority of the council's work is now dealt with by the council as a whole. This has increased democratic participation, reduced the time between meetings, increased efficiency. Also duplication from committee to the next, an LCC council, so say it starts off for general purposes, then it's on to the finance committee, then full council, you could be discussing it three times. So we're trying to avoid that sort of thing. And we have also taken out information reports that are communicated by other means rather than being on the agenda. So for example, we're reporting all the decisions made by Northcave Stephen District Council. But this isn't now a night of a discussion at the council meeting. So we're trying to make things a lot more efficient. We're very much inspired by Froom in Somerset, which is highly regarded by the National Association of Local Councils. Their structure inspired changes at Sleepford Town Council. The changes they made were important for making the council work differently, a more responsive to public demands. For example, they had no food bank or credit union. Both of these were set up by the town council with public support. So if there's something in Sleepford, hopefully our structure, if the public demands something, hopefully our structure will actually set it up. They even have a panel now for setting, set up for performing arts. Sleepford Town Council must listen. Sometimes in the past, it has failed to do so. Don't forget, this is a meeting for the public. Have your say either on paper or verbally. So it's very important that you remember. It's your chance at this meeting. However, these are early days and some more changes are probable. Abolishing five committees meant five committee chairs and five committee vice chairmen no longer had their previous rules, for example. We have a leader of the councils as well as a mayor. This has proved controversial, but it should be stressed that both, stress that it's not the same as that LCC or NKDC because of legal constraints. It needs to be noted, many town councils have a leader that operates within the constraints that are recognised by NK, that's the National Association for Local Councils. Having this position spreads responsibilities. And it should be stressed, even the mayor, it should be regarded as a first amongst equals, that every councillor is of an equal standing. And looking at how Sleepford Town Councils run, sometimes when you review a structure, it's best to start with blank sheet rather than modifying existing structures, and that's what we've done. We may find that changes need to be made in the future. And other changes at Sleepford Town Council, we've moved away from paper, where we're using paperless copies, so everyone's taking their iPads and laptops to meetings. And the saving is not only in paper and copying costs, but also the staff time involved, which can be used for other purposes, as well as the cost of postage and envelopes. This is making the council more efficient. We've also, we also have a carefully recruited new clerk, who is to be communicated to all members of the public. I think for the town council, for me, I'm a Grantham lad, by the way, in the sense that's where I live, but I recognise that the town must be in touch with its community as best it can. So it's transparency and accountability, I know these are sort of buzzwords, it's important to me that residents can see what we're doing. And how we do that is important, whether it's through our website, social media and that, we need to know what's going on. Council, we don't do as much business down in what I call closed session. Councils are embracing the fact that we need to be honest and open about any of our activity unless we are constrained by matters of, obviously things like HR. We actually film and record meetings, there's a gentleman over the nose filming us as we sit here. And we put, this is put on YouTube and Facebook as well, which is common with many councils. I think for me, as well as helping council with the transition, improving the sort of public relations and building the relationships has been important because the town councils' relationships with other organisations, I think needed a boost. And hopefully I've been part of that with councillors to try and make it better from NKDC and LCC, and indeed the voluntary and charity sector that David mentioned there before. So it's been a hectic six months, just so you know, I mean for those of you that stood here in May and the outgoing chairman at the time was going. We had moved into this town hall, as you know, which was as an emptiest educational establishment for probably twelve months until the council came to take it over. Community use thing, we're trying to build on that, we have room availability and people can hire out space and that, and we try and push that wherever possible. Recently put more CCTV cameras down at the recreation ground, and there will be more going in, paid for by money from a large urban development that was completed in the planning assent, so that was paid for by somebody else. Supporting Northcom, ah, Northcave, well I apologise, Northcave Stephen's council with the shop front scheme. If you notice, there is Cornish twang coming through, because I imagine Cornish. So NCDC was a former work life, NKDC is something just over there now. We're supporting that scheme with Heritage England as well, to try and improve some of the shop franchises in Sleepford Town. David mentioned that we did get £12,000 Bag for Life award, and it was from Tesco. And I'm grateful to the residents of Sleepford that voted for us in the local supermarket for our proposal. And I'm pleased to tell you that yesterday, we had 170 new trees delivered into our depot. There's now safely under lock and key, and they will be installed over the coming weeks in a number of locations around to improve generally, and we will be doing some what we call wildflower work as well. Neighbourhood plans mentioned, we've got in tandem, we're currently late, we're working on a plan to underpin Northcave Stephen's local plan, which many of you might be aware of. Money jar toilets, we've extended the lease on that through negotiators with Northcave Stephen to provide an in-town establishment in public toilets. Some of you may be aware, again, Coblesford Mills presented a few issues as regards those that are recognised as a part of right of way down there, which has recently been, there's been some fencing and that built, but the council's been the sponsor for an application to try and get that put onto the main map as a public right of way perpetuity. David mentioned, we submitted a draft business plan for the marketplace and markets to NKDC, which has been looked at next week. And importantly also, we are working with Sleepford Museum, who are now up at the Monument Gardens, as you know, and it could certainly see for the blue, so we're pleased to be able to support those. For those things that are in the pipeline, again, skate park refurbishment, funnily enough, this arrived today, which is the final draw, which I will be taking to council on the 16th, and ask them to, in principle, support, to go out to final consultation with the new skate park, which we hope to deliver by the end of this financial year. The tractor shed over there, the green door building, which the council own, we're looking to bring that back into use as an operational base. East Gate car park needs a sort of major refurbishment in terms of layout and lining and such like, and the council will be considering a scheme on that. Remembering the money's been set aside for this over a number of years by the council. We need to do work at the cemetery as part of maintenance. Something, again, the community have asked us to look at speed indicating devices to, you know, enhance the thirty mile an hour issues on some of the main roads into Sleepford and that, so we're currently filling out the application for that. We've got work to do at our own allotments up at the drove, sorry, the drove, we rent the drove allotments, the allotments need a bit of work. St Danny's Church, I apologise, I put apostrophe S on there, I'm not so sure, that should be apostrophe S.
No.
And I'd like to know that the reassurance is that we were given when the current traffic flow was put in place, that in fact they actually have been looked at to see that they are still appropriate. And it does seem to me as a person who lives in the centre of town, that actually we make it too easy, even with all the problems of congestion, for people to keep passing backwards and forwards through Sleepford. And I think, you know, we do have a genuine voice here to say that, you know, ten years and traffic flows increased tremendously.
Thank you very much, you've got councillor Muffin.
Yeah, you asked what the town council had done. I think I've been on the council for five years, and several times within that period, we have made verbal requests through meetings, and we've also put those, these requests and suggestions into letters to go to county council and the district council with regard to small changes within Sleepford that we thought would alleviate the situation. One of those was that at the crossing, after the train's gone through and the barriers come up, that traffic should be allowed out of the town before more comes in. And I was, I stood up just like this, I was so brave, and they just said to me, no, it can't be done. And that is not true, simply not true. They were making all sorts of excuses, and we said, come and just watch, come and have a look. The other small measure that we suggested was that at each of those points within that square of the one-way system, at the monument, there's this sort of unwritten rule where you let someone go, zip, zipping, turn, or merging, or whatever. And it's, that's like the unwritten rule, everyone knows that, and yet at the other corners, they don't do it. And we suggested that signs were put up, that that was just ignored. And we said, well, you've, you put those lights in at an awful, a large cost, and then you took them out again, so that was worth trying. Why don't you just try these, these simple measures? We were told that we were wrong. This is on camera.
Several of us on the town council, and even before I was on the town council, I was pointing out, as councillor Brandis pointed out, that the problem was not with the level crossing. The main problem was not with the level crossing, the main problem was at the monument. I came up Grantham Road the other day, stopped at the traffic lights, the train was coming through. When the gates went up, the traffic shot across from Mayor and Main, blocked the road, the vehicles going out, and still nothing moved. And I sat through three changes of lights before I did the twenty yards to get over the crossing. And then I got nowhere because it was still queued up to the monument. We have pointed it out on many occasions, they've always said, no, it's not that, it's all to do with the crossing. But that was mainly to make the excuse to close it. I think there is a simple way of helping, one is to change the phasing of the lights at the level crossing. Vehicles go out of town, as we suggested, and vehicles from Grantham Road come in, and then allow the traffic across from Mayor and Main. When I wrote about this, I had a letter still at home saying, no, they couldn't do that, because if they did that, traffic would do what they did before, come down Grantham Road, sorry, come down Mayor and Main, go down Grantham, shoot round in the middle of the road and come back that way. Well, exactly, the opposite happens now. They go straight down Mayor and Main, into the car arms car park or into Oldies, turn around and come back. You know, it's a false argument that they put, but they will not listen.
It's councillor Fernandez, and we will have to move on, I think we've had a lot of replies to the one question this morning.
I've put forward, if you want to put a, for the Sleepford development plan, if you've got any ideas, do hand it in. We've got to have four sheets in the front. Secondly, I've put forward that we have two more traffic lights there. One at the church, what's her name, at the railway cross, railway side, and one at the Tesco's entrance, that would do that. The railway can upgrade the crossing and make it down to fifty seconds if they do the same as they do down at Idrath, down that crossing. It's all radar, infrared and all that lot, but they won't do it. That's it.
Thank you very much. Can we move on? Is there any other members of the public questions or further questions for the same person?
Yes, is there any chance of getting residence-only car parking in the town centre, particularly Westgate, Riley?
The short answer to this is, Northcave Stephen insists that all areas that have residence parking must have, first of all, a certain amount of support visible, but also when they hold a ballot, that there's got to be more than fifty per cent of the people who live in that area who support it. So if you've got an area with a hundred residents, and if forty-nine of them say yes and nobody's against, that isn't enough, you've got to get fifty-one out of a hundred.
Even so, couldn't that be argued? Because there are problems developing along there. Firstly, whoever permitted it, but there's a, there are a lot more residents living along there, shops have been converted into flats, and by the essence of that, those people probably have more cars. Recently, it's been WEL aligned for far more, so the actual slots where you could park for twenty-four hours have reduced. People are parking defensively and deliberately so, so other people can't park. Skips have been left in the road, and there have been, people have been bollarding, and particularly along Electric Station Road. So there is an issue, and I would contest that you can go along and just say that you need fifty per cent approval. I know those may be the real rules, but surely some sort of protest could be lodged, if we could do something a bit more active about that.
Well, the first thing, before we go to somebody else, I'd suggest that residents have a petition. You need involvement to keep all the, the local, sorry, I'm getting the boundaries wrong, it's councillor Fields.
I am Electric Station Road, and I am the roads off Castle Causeway, and I have petitioned or written to NK.
Councillor Willis.
Well, I'm assuming you make the observation, from experience elsewhere, often a local resident's owner consultation and information going out before any council consultation done is a really good idea. Because first of all, you will get a much better idea of everybody's view, and I'm sure you know a lot of people's view anyway in the street. But also to, I mean, I tend to think petitions are not the best idea in the world personally, but if you actually presented a consultation to the council that you'd undertaken that showed what you want to show, that would have informed the residents and demonstrated a desire for it if that's the outcome of the consultation. And certainly I've used that elsewhere very successfully with the Highways Authority, so just a thought.
And councillor Fernandez.
I've just been to Leicester in Leeds, and they have resident parking, but they have it in a, in a way that it's to our parking unless you've got a resident sticker.
I think that works very well.
Does anybody know the point of contact at Northcave Stephen's? It's Mark. Ruddyts? Sorry. Just. Mark Ruddyts, is it? No.
Taylor.
Mark Taylor, thank you. But it's certainly an interesting point, I mean, the gentleman, you know, if you want to give me details, and then again, I can pass the information on. I mean, again, we could certainly lobby if councils are so minded, I mean, obviously Northcave Stephen, the decision-making processes of the county council, because I'm acutely aware of sort of parking issues around the town. So I've seen them myself on my way around, it seems to be increasing all over the place. Yes, can we place on the next agenda so that we can? Yeah, I'd hardly do that, yeah. Any more questions, members of the public? Westgate. Westgate. Are there any further questions?
Even my councillors, if they have a question, they want to do in general thing.
Statement. Of course, there's a wonderful new car park down Grantham Road, it's never used by anybody.
It's quite interesting, Dave, I've been, we only skate car park, members of the public probably know, and I was there today, I was like shepherding cars into the last remaining spaces because it was max skate today, you know, trying to point them into the fact that just behind the mall lines there, you can park there, that is public spaces, but the cars driving around and around, I'm thinking. My cash cow, as they call it, sort of, I was going, ooh, you know, let's get rid of the green areas and add more spaces in a funny sort of way, I'm thinking, you know, I would generate a bit more money, but that's a very narrow business view.
And you've been helping me a lot when I tried to find a space.
You what, say?
It didn't help me when I tried to find a space.
Probably I would have.
It was a bit too early. The big problem with a car park on Grantham Road is that if you're not back at a certain time, you get locked in.
Yes.
So anybody catching a train and coming back late, and what time is it, six?
It's eight or six, or eight to eight.
Anyway, it's early, can't leave their car in, people are going on bus trips, apparently, car.
Yes, we've got to live with the public views.
And also, I mean, as also as another resident, I'd like to add, I mean, the situation is acutely bad, I have to actually park my car on the other side of town. So I have to walk thirty minutes to get to my car. There's no way that I can park on the street which I live on or anywhere in that area because, as this gentleman has mentioned, about the aggressive tactics which are employed by some residents, but I see that as something which is caused by, you know, the situation as a whole, I don't agree with people who put bollards around, thank you.
Please, I've got to sort of point out, just I thought you were together in this.
No, no, no.
But again, if you wouldn't mind just emailing, I'll, it's asked for the agenda.
Councillor, I know certainly, I have, and I did report, the person that somebody that lives very close to the Little Theatre, that there's all sorts of things, there is car parking space, and I had to report that to the county council. The county council's got some element in taking initial responsibility, if you could then go to a resident car parking scheme, but that is then administered by NKDC, one of the complicated arrangements between the two councils. But I certainly think that we, there's this, it's the old network problem to a certain extent, there's only a certain amount of road where you can park cars, and it probably isn't enough for the, for the numbers of cars that are now associated with the residents of Sleepford. But, and Kevin mentioned our own car park at East Gate, I mean, that's available, is it available for charge at night?
Yes, yes, it is, I mean, again, you're saying. Between six AM and eight.
We're trying to make sure that when NKDC don't use their car park, that's again available at night or at the weekend, and that is being used. But I do think we need to start, we're not going to get much more money out of our car park.
No, I saw.
Because it's getting virtually full all the time now. We do need to start perhaps looking at alternative town council car parking provision, and perhaps working with other people that have got car parks, to see if we can bring those car parks into use. The St George's Academy car park, it must be one that, you know, perhaps could be used once the teachers aren't using it, as a way of, you know, driving overnight parking, you know, something like that.
It's not really an issue at night. And during the day, the one hour car parking can be empty.
Yes. I do think the idea that was, that was mooted, you know, in terms of resident parking with, with the ability for people to park for a short period of time, if there's space there when they want to go shopping. I really don't think that if that was done, that it would sort of reduce the amount of shopping parking. Because let's face it, most people's cars do go away during the day, it's just a weekend. Parking over an hour without any charge whatsoever, and it's only a pound for three hours. And that's not appropriate, using a car parking space that's quite valuable for you to use in the daytime when you, you know, when you're not using your car for work or whatever it is. So I think we need to start looking at a bit more about how to encourage your safe car parking, and very happy to work with them to actually see how we can come about. And I think councillor Willis is exactly right, you know, it's showing how it would work and how the community would operate, I think, rather than just put a petition forward.
Right, so. I might just try and sort of bring together some of the appropriate comments that we've had around the room, because I think if that was going forward within my walls, I suppose it's appropriate, I should make a comment. With regard to, whether you want to call it aggressive tactics for sort of reserving places, I have taken this up with Highways Lincolnshire County Council, and they said there's nothing they can do. Now, the other point which is going to be relevant with regard to the advice that we've been given, is that some, a couple of years ago, there was supposedly a poll taken around Sleepford about whether there should be residential parking or not. We never really quite understood what the outcome of that was. It's interesting to know that on East Road, there's now a section post NKDC's buildings, which has become residents' parking. We're talking about an area here, which as people have said, does present problems, but there are imaginative solutions. I mean, I've been to Hull, we're going to Hull in the weekend, in the centre of Hull, I can quite simply as an outsider park against a sign which says, as a non-resident, you can park here for three hours, or if you're a resident.
We need raffle prizes, please, or donations to buy them. We'd like bottles of wine, spirits, gift sets like bubble baths and so on, and also we want to put together a hamper of luxury goods, so if you could buy tins and goods which are well within their sell-by dates, please. Thank you very much to councillors.
Into the office if anything.
Yeah, yeah, this is really for councillors, but it's information for other people too.
Would you like that clock, by the way? I dearly.
It's like, yeah, we put that in the price.
I hear it every, every day.
Would you bring anything, any offerings to the office, please, before Wednesday, the 16th, that's in a fortnight's time, or bring them to that meeting? But the sooner you can bring them in, the better, because then we can count them all up and decide what else we need to buy. Thank you.
And we'll be also looking for further prizes for the 28th of January for the Burns Night, which.
My wife.
Gives you a great opportunity to wear kilts or whatever you may wish to wear.
We'll ask again, we want things after Christmas.
For any of the members of the public, I mean, obviously we've had this meeting tomorrow, because anything you want to raise, I mean, my email address is available on the website, I can put things under my councillors', in their arena, under their noses and such like, I'm always willing to engage and listen and such like. I mean, I've engaged with quite a few of the Facebook warriors that seem to pervade Sleepford or something, and I have a few of them in my office and listen entirely to what their gripes and pains are, so it's an interesting moment for me. Because to make me smile, one of the first days I ever came into Sleepford to start work, I actually said, who the hell put this hanging monument in the middle of the road? Saw a picture from 1950, when it was actually like probably two lanes going.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I've just had to bill the quid to repair and clean the monument, so I'm wondering whether the council might decide it might be better off without it, so I haven't seen the pictures listed. That's a council's decision.
And I've brought it down, Mr Chairman, on the principle that if it's not screwed down, people do carry things away. The clock is screwed down.
Yes. We've burned a question, can you put things on a piece of paper and let us know what we should be doing?
Can I just ask the Chair to do one more thing? I mean, Lady Baxter, who's copiously making notes with Carol, joined us as a minute spark about fourteen months ago, and she is sadly leaving us as her last night, Mr Mayor. So it's only a little small item on behalf of councillors, the council, I should say, councillors' table. Give these to Carol as a token of our thanks. Apologies, Carol. The greatest. I also have had a small gift from the staff as well, these are from the council, the councillors' staff as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much. I've really enjoyed it and I will miss it, and you've been so kind to me, and it's just so much, thank you.
Right, in this format, ladies and gentlemen, we're scheduled to meet again next May, but like I said, any of the members of the public, you must never be afraid to approach with my Facebook, website, there's access into the council.
we must never be afraid to approach with my Facebook, website, there's access to the council, I, everything that we get from the council is going to look at. Feel free if you want, still grabbing on the cup of coffee, I'll eat those French fancies, which I.